Good evening and welcome to the April Work Session. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and visible with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father God, thank you so much for this opportunity that we have to come together and just serve the community and serve you by the things that we will discuss and the decisions that will be made. Father, we pray and ask for your guidance during this meeting, in your son's name we ask it. Amen.
Amen. All right, I need a motion for approval of the agenda. Have a motion and a second on approval of the agenda. All in favor say aye. Opposed nay. Thank you. Ms. Bennett, recognitions.
Good evening. I wanted to recognize the school media coordinators. It is School Library Month, the month of April, so I will call them to come forward. Jessica Dickerson from Janesville, Maren Moblin, South Creek Middle, Katherine Edwards, Weemton Primary, Lisa Bargel, Riverside Middle, and Joanne Wall, EJ Hayes. The library truly is the heart of the school. They are a good resource, not just for the students but also for the staff. I've been there, I've seen all the questions and all the please help me's from the staff and the students. In Martin County, they're also extension of the Technology Department. Anything that we've implemented, of the one-to-one, all the different programs, they're the ones who make that happen at the school level. They are the first line of defense. They take all the problems before, they get to us, and they do all they can to alleviate and not have so much work on the technicians. So I came in and asked a lot of them this year, and they have all done whatever has been asked of them, smiling most of the time. But they jumped right on board. They communicate with me daily, they communicate with each other. We meet monthly, and they truly are blessing to me, and I think they are to each other. They communicate with each other, they have text threads, they make each other laugh. I think they have a good time supporting each other, and they truly are better together. I greatly appreciate each one of you for all that you do, and for your dedication to the students of Martin County Schools. Thank you.
All righty, the next item on the agenda, information action items, policy revision updates. Ms. Andrea Lilly?
Good evening.
Good evening.
And tonight, we're going to discuss for first read, the 2000 series for Board Operations. And basically, there's this would be like your base, and then with what was already in the Martin County Schools plan, and then they updated that with all the PLSs. So starting off with Policy Code 2000, and I believe y'all have a copy of all this in your folder. The operational goals of the Board, some minor revisions for clarity was in there, changed, then it changed the name of the policy to add the Board, and then also changed the term system to district, or instead of the school district, they use system. On 2010, the Board and Superintendent Relations, the language in paragraph two was added, and it now requires the superintendent to annually report to their Board the total number of school mental health support personnel employees within the district. And the last paragraph was also added to adopt the policy. 2110, there was a typo in that as a legal reference, and 2115, that policy is current. 2116, we have local language that they added and highlighted that in yellow for you. And then they also added the PLS language to our policy to further address the basis and removal of a Board member from office. And then, moving on to the next section, we have 2120. And there is the Code of Ethics for the School Board, and this policy was revised extensively to be consistent with the current PLS manual and of relevant statutes that needed to be added. So they added the recommended language there to comply with all Board policies and set expectations for conduct regardless of whether the policies require compliance for the Board members. 2120 was revised to be consistent also with new language, and the Board member will not influence any personnel matter pertaining to the Board member's spouse's employment with the school system, and also added new conflict of interest rules for Board members. 2125 is also in conjunction with 7315 for confidential information, and this is a new piece to this policy, and it's double-coded because it applies to both Board members and to employees. And it's basically around the appropriate positions that should be referenced in the third sentence in the first paragraph, and that is that the Records Officer, Public Information Officer, or Chief Communications may be responsible for determining whether records are public or confidential under federal law. Also, employees should be prohibited from storing personal identifiable student information in private or personal email, and also in other private electronic accounts. And 2123, they also updated language there, and training also offered by the North Carolina School Board Association, along with the University of North Carolina School of Government or other qualified sources as the Board chooses, and that's required ethics education that may be provided by same organizations. 2127, there's a substitute for that one, so you should have a separate attachment. And that substitute is changing the policy around social media, and it changes to Twitter, or from Twitter to X, the new name for Twitter, is in there. Also, that posts on school systems' social media page account are presumed to be official speech of the school system, so we have to be careful in that regards. Also, 2130 around Board Member Compensation, and there's another attachment for that as well, for what we currently have in place, and that would be 2130E. And this provides internal control for travel expenses, discusses that, and the processes that may be modified to be consistent with our local practice if we need to do that, and the internal controls to be sufficient to ensure the expenses incurred by the Board members are authorized, documented, reasonable in cost, and support the school system objectives. Any out-of-state trips have to be approved by the full Board. 2210 are the duties of the officers, and the superintendent here is required by law to serve as the ex facto secretary to the Board, and that was added. 2230, the Board Committees and Liaisons, the language here is addressed for standing committees. If the Board does not have standing committees, this section can be omitted. Moving along. We have, also in that 2300, we have three types of meetings there, the regular, specially-called, and emergency, and they need to clarify some of the language in there around what an emergency is and how it can be called. And also, when specially-called meetings have to be scheduled, who may call them as well, and they're revising the sections addressing emergency and special meetings. The public hearing is not required by law, and may be scheduled when the Chair or the Superintendent determines that that emergency meeting needs to be added. Also, they deleted a paragraph in there called "other special meetings." 2302, the remote participation in Board meetings, they added some definitions in here. They reorganized this to distinguish between the different circumstances in which the Board authorizes remote participation, and so during the declared emergencies, you're able to remote in, but no declared emergency or distinguish between the members participating remotely from those who will only, some members. So you can have a meeting, but it has to be everyone here unless it's emergency declared, or you can remote in individually, but not as a whole. Also prohibiting wholly remote meetings in the absence of state or locally declared emergencies is an option for extenuating circumstances only. And... It goes on to talk about if Board members are participating remotely, not merely doing so in closed session portion, you have to actually be in attendance for the entire meeting. And some items listed here are also required under open meetings law. So they ask that we review this policy carefully and make sure in agreement with our Board Attorney how we would like to proceed on some of this. 2310 is public participation at Board meetings. Section A is the updated language recommending and clarifying the requirements for the Board to vote to hear parties' presentations that have already been on the agenda. A two-thirds vote is required for that. Also, procedures around public comment, including additional time limits for speakers and for comment period itself, and deletes the requirement for a Superintendent to develop procedures for public comment. This update will change 20 minutes to 30 minutes unless you would like to keep it at 20 minutes. Also, 2320, compliance with open meetings law, there's new language there to address using audio and audiovisual recordings for minutes. And then, 2330 is a new around Board meeting agendas, and the Board here has to specify the order of the agenda and vote on that with a two-thirds vote to change the agenda. 2340 was up to date and current, as well as 2341, and 2342 is around voting methods, and this was to clarify that Board members should vote on all issues unless he or she has a conflict of interest, or he or she is unable to remain impartial in a judicial matter before the Board. And also, it adds information regarding written ballots. 2400 is around Board Policies, and the language there provides the Superintendent with limited authority to exempt any school designated as a restart school from the Board policy, and also sets forth procedures by which a local Board may request authorization to implement a school reform model. 2410, this one was rearranged and restructured, and so the policies 2420, 2440, and 2450 will be rescinded, and all of that information will be housed in 2410. 2420 was one rescinded. 2430 requires that the maintenance of an official physical copy of the manual, of the policy manual, must be reviewed and left in central office. Also, current policy is up to date for 2470. 2475 is new around school rules. The Board does not have this policy in the manual, so we're adding this and sending it a clean version for you to review. 2500 is, you currently have option B in place for 2500, and that is asked to be rescinded. It identifies specific statutory requirements for appeals of decisions of the school system personnel. It does not provide any additional information on how hearings will be conducted, nor does it address any possible legal requirements of a discrimination compliant procedure. And so, this one, they're asking that we review option A and adopt that as a new, which goes into much more detail. And that concludes the review. Do you have any questions or anything that I can bring back to you after this first read?
I think everybody's good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, capital outlay budget. Ms. Centora?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this evening, we have attached a copy of the 2425 capital outlay budget for the Board's consideration and adoption. What we have is, we have, this is a consolidated spreadsheet of all the capital outlay requests that we have received from the schools and the departments, presented in detail that they have noted what their needs are. So this year's grand total is 6,622,682.71. This is a slight increase from what we had requested last year, but our needs do continue to increase. So this is what we would like to present to the county commissioners for their consideration upon the Board's approval. Are there any questions?
What is the, am I missing, how much is the increase from last year?
Oh, so...
Am I looking at it wrong?
No, these two columns are basically, the first column is what...
Requested versus presented.
Exactly, which is the same. We didn't make any changes this year, but we like to show both columns in case the administrators like to add anything to these requests, that's why we show both columns, but in this case it's the same. But fiscal year '24's request was 5,483,402.25, so...
5.4 million?
Yes, we have 5.4 million. So it's just a little increase.
Hey. And South Creek Elementary said, "Replace the baseboard throughout the building, is that base cove, or is that base board?"
Cove base.
Cove base, okay, so it's the vinyl, it's not actual baseboard? Okay.
The cluffers and stuff, it's just Mr. Chairman.
I see.
If I may say, in support of him, Dr. White challenged us all, we had, we went through and did the capital outlay request, but we weren't, she reminded us, which we all need to remind him of, it's our responsibility to put the needs of the schools that was in it, and it's the county's responsibility to try to fund it as best we can. So we went back and reviewed some of the things, Dr. Daley, I know, hit last year a lot about the age of the buildings, and some of the, some of the length of the list, extensive repairs or requests are a lot to do with that. So it puts us behind a little bit, but we went back and were more thorough with our request. Some of the requests, Dr. Daley and I, or Dr. Daley and last year Candy, they sat down and kind of would fill in. When you go to a school and you say, "I need a $700,000 track," well, the principals have a tendency to back off of that request because it's difficult to find funding for it. So they focused more on things that were attainable, and we went back and decided to print, you know, a list, a more detailed list about what each school needed, and as part of a plan Dr. White and I have to sit down and come up with a five-year plan that we'll do again this year, and try to find ways to get some of these expenses. Expenses are going up, as you know, but cost-wise, you know, 20, 30, 40 percent, some items, so a repair, so five million last year is the new six million this year, maybe eight million, and it's just amazing how things appear now.
And I did, I did challenge our principals. Our job is not to ask for what we think we can receive, our job is to ask for our needs. And we do have several schools that have several big repairs, and now, I understand, you know, we've got to work with the county commission, but let's create a five-year vision, let's create a 10-year vision, because we miss 100 percent of the shots we don't take. We have to put our needs out there and then create a strategic plan to get there. We know we won't be able to do everything in one year, but this is about creating long-term vision to accommodate and accomplish all of our needs, not just what we think we can get, what our true needs are in order to give the children of Martin County the absolute best.
Any other questions? Do we need to vote on this now?
Yes.
All right. I will entertain a motion.
I'm going to present this to the county commissioners.
Second.
We have a motion to accept the 2425 capital outlay budget and present it to the county commissioners. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Thank you. All right, Ms. Centora, I guess we can move on to the current expense.
Okay, so attached here, you will find a copy of the 2425 current expense fund budget for the Board's consideration and adoption. This is a little bit longer than the other one. So there are a few highlights with this budget that I just wanted to point out. The first one is from my research, in future years, the local current expense budget only had one-year comparison. I put two-years comparison on here just so you could see the trend for this budget. The main increases for this year, there will be, the state has proposed a 3 percent salary increase, of course, that hasn't passed legislation yet, but that is what we're expecting to have to work with. The hospitalization is also increasing to $8,095 per employee annually. That is an increase of $538 per employee that we have to cover also. Good news is retirement went down slightly, so that's going from 25.02 percent currently this year to the proposed 24.04 percent for next year. We've also factored in an additional 3 percent increase for insurance premiums. Some are higher, some may be lower, but this is just the average. We do have increases in transportation costs due to having to cover any overages from state funding with local funding. Also, we have budgeted additional funds for workshop expenses. Due to the loss of SRF funding, we were able to offer quite a bit of professional development to our staff with that SRF funding, and with those funds ending in September of 2024, we want to try to compensate and be able to maintain some of that professional development that we've had so far. And then, of course, we've had some maintenance increases just due to those supplies and part increases. Those rates continue to climb. Any questions? So this increase this year is 13.97 percent. It is slightly lower than last year's increase from the 2324 fiscal year request. That request was an increase of 21.29 percent. And again, this year, we're just, a 13.97 percent increase.
All right, if there are no questions, I will entertain a motion. Have a motion and a second to approve the 2425 current expense budget. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Centora. All right, Dr. White, you're up.
Good evening, Board members. I'm going to come down here and invite my team, who's going to be presenting with me tonight, to come on up. This evening, we are going to present a comprehensive study of South Creek High School. As the Board knows, we did do a mid-year merger between South Creek High School and Riverside High School due to a significant teacher shortage and the impact that that was having on the education of our children. Since that time, we have been working on a comprehensive study of the school, a deep dive into what's working at the school, what's not working at the school, and what is in the best interest of our children. Tonight, we are going to present our study to you and our findings across those areas. Next slide, please. This slide actually outlines the general statute that overviews the consolidations of schools. So these are the things that our school system must do in order to move forward with considering the consolidation of South Creek and Riverside High Schools. Now, our schools have been merged, their schedule was merged due to a significant teacher shortage. However, what we are going to consider at this point is what is the long-term best interest of our children? Would consolidating these two high schools and creating one high school create an overall better educational experience for the high school children of Martin County? So I wanted to share this general statute. It outlines specific areas that we need to consider, and those specific areas are here. So tonight, we're going to take a dive into student welfare, geographic conditions, anticipated school enrollment, hardship considerations, and then the statute asks for any other considerations that would be important for the School Board to consider, and for us, that is going to be our financial and human capital analysis. So tonight, we're going to go through a presentation that outlines each area that we have spent quite a bit of time delving into this year and considering, and we will, at the end of this, open it up for questions. We do ask, if you will, to please hold your questions to the end of the presentation, because in the beginning, we are just going to present the actual data, the actual black and white concrete, this is what South Creek has, this is the data that it's earned, and then we're going to get into some points of consideration post-merger. We're going to show you the electives, for example, that South Creek had versus the electives that they have if we consolidate. So some of your questions are most likely going to be answered as we go through the presentation, but at the conclusion of the presentation, we will open it up for questions about any point. So if there's something early on, if you're just jot down that question, and then it will probably be answered throughout the presentation, but if not, we will be glad to answer that as we go through. Any questions before we begin the study? Okay, I'm going to invite Ms. Andrea Lilly up to begin our student welfare section.
As with all information that we discuss, and especially in data meetings and starts up all our conversations, we always seem to start with data. We need to look at our past and see what we've done so we can look and determine what our future's going to look like. So our student welfare at South Creek High School, looking at that, they had in 2022, '23, they had 247 students, and those were an over... overall grade at that school at that time was a forty-four for that school performance grade. And that school performance grade consists of Math One, North Carolina Math Three, Biology, English Two, ACT, Work Keys, Math Course Rigor, and Graduation Rate. That calculation set that school at a letter D for the school performance grade. As we're looking at that data, like for Math One, we noticed that we went down there from twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three. And looking at the bottom chart on the right, by the bottom right, that was three students. We had three students in Math One that were proficient, the South Creek. Also, looking at Math Three, we dropped there as well, and that ended up being six students. And in Biology, we had a slight increase to sixteen point four percent, but that was just still ten students that were proficient. And also, English Two, we dropped there, and that was thirteen students who were proficient. And so looking at Work Keys, there, we dropped as well in ACT and Work Keys, and our ACT dropped down, and that was only fourteen point nine percent of the students who met benchmark. And with our Work Keys, we had fifty-six point three percent who made a silver or better on their Work Keys exam. Math Course Rigor, and with Work Keys there, we had few opportunities, very few opportunities for our students to take CTE courses and become concentrators. So that was something that we were lacking. With Math Course Rigor, we did have ninety-four point nine percent of their students who took Math Three, and that's really the only indicator there, is that they take Math Three. And that is usually what keeps people from being an F between the Math Course Rigor and the Grad Rate. And so fortunately, we had ninety-four point nine in Math Course Rigor, and then in Grad Rate, our cohort Grad Rate for four years was seventy-four point six, which we know we needed to increase that as well. That was down from the year before. And so looking at all that, we just continue to think about the supports that we had to put in place there. So moving along to looking at this D a little bit deeper, we look at the academic growth history that they had at that school. And their growth for the previous years, and that's on the bottom right side, you'll see that five out of the last six years, they did not meet growth. And so that one year that they did meet growth, it was slight growth, like negative growth. And so we had to look at that as well, and then also for that, South Creek High School was a low-performing school, and they were a low-performing school for four out of the last five years collectively.
All right, now, we're just going to give you a comprehensive look at discipline, specifically for last school year. The North Carolina School Report Card actually reports student discipline in rate. So this is looking at the suspension and expulsion rate per one thousand students. Now, that's how it calculates it statistically. We know at South Creek, we don't have a thousand students, but that is how the rate is calculated per one thousand students. And so here on this slide, you see the rate for South Creek High School, the rate for Martin County Schools, and the rate for the state of North Carolina. And what you can see here is that the short-term suspensions are higher than Martin County Schools and considerably higher than the state of North Carolina. You can also see that for the long-term suspensions. And what's especially alarming is the in-school suspension rate. So when you're considering the rate per one thousand students, our rate at South Creek High School for in-school suspension was greater than a thousand. So what this is telling you theoretically, a hundred percent, more than a hundred percent of the students were in in-school suspension last year. And so what that tells us is that we did have some significant discipline issues at South Creek High School. When we look at the next slide, this shows you that same data, but gives you a different view. So you can see the short-term suspensions, the gold color is South Creek, the red is Martin County Schools, and then the purple bluish color is the state of North Carolina. And again, you can see that South Creek High School is considerably higher than both of the other areas, but again, that in-school suspension rate is especially concerning. I will share that later in this presentation. We're going to share some bright spots about that data and what that data looks like since the two schools have merged together. But at this point, we're just showing you the historical data and where we were with South Creek High School.
So we're going to take a look now at the current state of the teaching positions at South Creek High. Some of this is going to look a little bit familiar from where we were doing kind of a recap of our merger, where things were before our merger and then post-merger, but adding a little bit of data to that as well. So the current state of the teaching positions, when we actually, when we merged, we had five core teachers, I'm sorry, pre-merger, there were five core teachers that we ended, and we ended up bringing four of those over when we merged back in the beginning of this semester. And there was only one full-time elective teacher at South Creek High School, their foods and nutrition teacher. And then they had four part-time elective teachers. So their art, their P E, their ROTC, and their Spanish were all part-time programs. When we started looking at this, we decided to exclude the CTE classes that were already being taught here at the Innovation Campus, because we were already sharing those. So this is just strictly comparing what's offered in the South Creek building versus what was offered in the Riverside building. We started digging into some numbers, kind of looking at where things have been this semester since we've merged versus looking at registration numbers for next year. And I'll talk a little bit about the specifics with registration in just a second. But basically, what we have found is that there is a huge crisis going on with South Creek High School, particularly directed at their teacher shortage. So we've got currently five core teacher vacancies with one potential retirement coming in the fall of next year. And also, one of the math teachers from South Creek High School actually moved to a middle school position. So if we were to go back to two separate high schools right now, there would be no English teachers at South Creek High School. There would be one math teacher, one science teacher, and two social studies teachers. We were fortunate enough to be able to fill one of their social studies vacancies this semester, and so we would have two social studies teachers that are a part of South Creek High School now. So given those numbers, they would have four core teachers. When we're looking at the number of students and projected enrollment, based on what we have in Power School, if all of those numbers were to stay the same for next year, South Creek High School would need two full-time science teachers, and they would need three full-time teachers for all of their other subject areas. So eleven full-time teachers total. This excludes the teachers needed for the early college, because those are counted in with the Riverside numbers. That excludes the early college, and also, this is looked at if we cap classes at thirty. Okay, so this is kind of a, if we cap at thirty scenario, based on current enrollments, if they stayed the same for next year. So they would need eleven core teachers in the South Creek building. That averages out to about nine hundred and fifty-seven core slots that are needed. And with those four teachers, that would be enough to offer classes for seven hundred and twenty slots. That would leave us with a hole for lots of children. We would have two hundred and thirty-seven slots where students would have to take classes online. Kind of the same thing that we were looking at pre-merger, except these numbers are actually more significant than they were the last time that we looked at them. So if we were to put students back in online classes, they would cost about three hundred and fifty dollars per student, per class. So to fill those core class deficits, that would cost us right at eighty-three thousand dollars. Plus, we have to have the subs or the facilitators to monitor each one of those classrooms. So that's just for our core classes, English, Math, Science, Social Studies. And then if we look even further at that, if we include our electives, we would have a lot of holes in those schedules as well. So again, looking at the total school population, they would need one thousand eighty-three elective slots. They have one full-time teacher, their family and consumer science teacher. So if she had thirty students per class, she could fill a hundred and twenty of those slots. The kids who actually come over here for CTE classes to the end, they average about, if Riverside and South Creek kind of split, like if that class caps at thirty, then Riverside gets fifteen slots and South Creek gets fifteen slots. If it's twenty-five, then they split it as, you know, close to half, and then if it's a class that caps at twenty, then they get ten each. So on average, for the CTE classes that students would come here and take, we would have about five hundred and forty slots allotted for South Creek High School. Also, looking back at our registration data, excluding the early college kids, the rest of the South Creek student body, we only had fifteen course requests for Martin Community College classes. That's officially the paperwork that has been done with our college liaison. So if we minus out the one-to-one, five-forty, and fifteen, that leaves us with four hundred and eight holes, or the empty spots with nowhere to put those students. That's if we're using the elective teacher on their campus, all of their allotments here at the IC, plus the college classes that they have registered for up until this point. We would still have four hundred and eight holes that we would have to find somewhere for those students to go. So again, if we look at that online option, four hundred and eight slots at three hundred and fifty dollars a class is a hundred and forty-two thousand eight hundred dollars, plus the cost of the subs or the facilitators again. Also, what we have talked about in the past, and what really this all comes down to also, is a lack of purpose for their students. The students, you can see that there's a limited class variety, there's very, very little for them to choose from, and they had been filling schedules with what's available rather than completing those pathways that they're interested in. I'm actually really, really happy to say that we have had the best registration conferences with students that I have seen in my career, and they have been the most engaging conversations. The counselors are meeting one-on-one with these students, we're talking to them, we're finding out what they want to do throughout the rest of high school, what their career goals are, whatever it is that they want to do after they graduate from high school. And every single one of those children has been able to tell to us about what their future vision is. All kinds of pathways, lots of different variety there. And so we've been able to take the time to navigate each one of those individual conversations. As of the end of the day today, we have met with six hundred and thirty-seven students. That is a counselor sitting down with a student, one-on-one, in some cases, two people at a time, but mostly one-on-one, meeting with those students and talking to them about what their plans are and how we're going to move forward in registering them for classes for next year, and what kinds of opportunities we can provide for them. So we've got about seven hundred and eighty students all together. We are well on our way to meeting with all of those students. So what we have discovered is the difference in scheduling for our children and how we carry those conversations with them differently versus just being able to fit kids in whatever schedule that we have. So if we have this skeleton matrix here that we're looking at, you're just going to put kids wherever you can, as best you can. We're going to talk more about the pathway completion, but even the kids, you saw the Work Keys scores, even the ones that are doing that, that have been CTE completers and have completed pathways, that doesn't necessarily mean that they've completed a pathway in the area of their actual career interest. And we're finding that they really are interested, they really are vested in their future. And so we're going to look a little bit later at the variety of classes that we have to offer them, should we keep things the way that they are and merge together.
All right, and again, board members, this is an overview of where we were at South Creek prior to the merge. We're going to come back and show you a comparison of the two together in just a few minutes. Dr. Bowen?
So not only is there a teacher shortage at South Creek, but if you've been watching the news, you know that there's a national teacher shortage. In the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we were looking at about thirty-six thousand vacancies nationwide. This year, we're looking at sixty-two thousand vacancies nationwide. And unfortunately, the concern is that's going to continue to increase. In North Carolina, teacher shortage was reported at two thousand eight hundred and forty positions at the beginning of this school year. And recently released data from North Carolina speaks to the attrition rate of teachers, and it's increasing, particularly those beginning teachers. So that number is climbing. And so all of those things contribute to our inability to fill a lot of these positions that we have. It is even more difficult when you live in a small rural county to find teachers to come, and believe it or not, in small schools. And some of the reasons that this is true is the isolation of teachers when they come to a small school. So if you take, think about a small school that has about twelve to fourteen staff members, when you come into that school as a new teacher, if you're new to this area, it can be very difficult to become a member of that school community. And this was a quote from one of the surveys that was done within our system several years ago. One of our new teachers said, "The staff was so small and the friend groups were closed. I just didn't have anyone that I clicked with." And you know, if you move to an area that you're not familiar with, forming those bonds with people, that's one of the things that helps to keep you in place. Peer support is another problem that teachers have noted in small school districts. There's less opportunity for peer planning. So if you're at a school where there's one subject teacher or even just two subject teachers that have commonalities, then you don't have a lot of support in doing your planning. Sometimes you're planning by yourself, and when you have that support, it can make a big difference. Mentors have been a problem for us, especially this year. We have had to assign some mentors from other schools to work with teachers in our small schools, because we didn't have enough teachers within that school that either met the qualifications for mentoring or just enough staff in general. So at one of our middle schools, we have one staff member who is trying to mentor three to four people. So we've had people come over from different schools to assist with peer observations. And then the last reason that teachers who have left have given for having difficulty in small schools is a lack of boundaries. So in those small school settings where we don't have, we have a smaller student body, sometimes the boundaries that are set are not quite as rigid as some of the boundaries that we set in larger high schools or larger schools in general, and students are not consistently held accountable, because we know students by name, we feel like we can address behaviors without having those boundaries in place. And for new people on staff, that becomes very difficult, and it results in inconsistencies and stress for them in terms of discipline within the schools. And then the last slide, the next slide, teacher effectiveness ratings. So at South Creek High School, thirty-three point three percent of the teachers were effective out of the entire staff. So that's a very small percentage of our teachers that are effective. Again, if we go back to those things that we just talked about, some of those very things impact our teacher effectiveness. The ability to plan with other people, the ability to bounce ideas off of other people, those opportunities are not always present in small schools.
And this teacher effectiveness data comes directly from the North Carolina School Report Card. The state gives us this information for each of our schools. Okay, moving along, we're going to bring Ms. Whitaker back to look at our electives.
All right, so specifically concentrating on electives, what we've noticed with the classes that the students have requested compared to what they would actually have to offer, specifically at South Creek High School, they've got one foods teacher, again, she's only full-time elective, half an art this past year or this current school year that was only offered to the high school students in the fall, as their teacher is split between the middle school and the high school, and so they're doing middle school art this semester. Also, our ROTC instructors are, first semester, were traveling to Riverside High School first block and then going back to South Creek for the remainder of their two classes. Also, a halftime health and P E teacher, that was offered the first two blocks of the day, that was strictly for ninth-grade health and P E. of the day, um, that was strictly for ninth grade health and PE, with the graduation requirement, that was not leaving any room for advanced PE classes, weight training, the things that we really like to cater for our, um, athletes, um, and part of building our athletic programs as well. Um, in addition, um, we had a part-time Spanish teacher at South Creek High School at this time. Um, if we were to move back, there would not be a Spanish teacher at South Creek High School. They need four sections, two sections of Spanish one, two sections of Spanish two, and at this time, if we were to move back, they would not have access to that class, um, those classes on their building, in their building either. So, taking a look, there it goes, um, taking a look at when we put everybody together, this is what our elective options look like this semester. This is currently all of the classes that students have to choose from between Riverside and South Creek High Schools. You can see our awesome CTE program. Um, most of those classes are taught right here at the Innovation Campus with the exception of Foods and Culinary Arts, um, and then the Counseling Class, those are on the Riverside Campus. Um, but you can see the variety of classes that they have here, lots of career pathway options, every single one of those pathways, um, can lead into, or every single one of these courses can lead into pathway completion. And we're excited that we've actually offered more electives for students next year, um, to kind of gauge their interest and to see how we can actually add some more classes here. Arts as well, lots of variety, lots of different options. PE, more than just the health and PE classes, um, again, variety. ROTC, this is the one class that you can, um, you can do for eight levels. Every single semester that you're in high school, um, if somebody chooses to participate in ROTC, they have the ability to do that. And if we have some students who will go through that program, go through all eight levels, and that's a, a huge celebration in their program, um, that, that, um, they get to receive special credentials for that as well, and then our foreign language options. So that's kind of just a snapshot of what we have altogether. Um, this is what equity looks like for our students and being able to provide options for everybody. Um, and so, this is one of the reasons why we feel like we are better together.
So board members, as we look at electives, when we, if we go back to the former South Creek, we would have one full-time elective with three part-time electives and a vacancy in Spanish as compared with thirty-two options, not counting levels as different courses. For example, we are going to, we offer Foods One and Two, but not looking at that actually as the two level courses, we would have thirty-two options for our children. Um, and so, we wanted to make sure the board understood, um, that piece. At this time, we're going to bring Coach McGill to discuss athletics.
Good evening, everyone. So as Dr. White, when she first came, we talked about geographic location shouldn't determine the opportunity for a child. You, we all in the same county, so basically what you see on this chart was a twenty-two, twenty-three school year at Riverside High School and a twenty-two, twenty-three school year at South Creek High School, and the opportunities that our student, af- students had participate, opportunity to participate in. And we just kind of broken down, as you can see, Riverside High School had a si- sixteen different sports, South Creek only had eight, and we broken down what sports had JV, what sports has varsity, et cetera. And then the last column, as you can see, once we combined, we got many more opportunities the kids had, when we played together as Martin County High School, we were all, we were able to add JV teams. For example, in, in football, um, we added a JV girls' basketball team, JV, you know, so we had more opportunities for the kids to participate in, so we wanted to show coming together was more opportunities. And, you know, we talk about experience, we want to just show some things that what the kids go through, you know, we, a lot, you know, sometimes with kids participate, we want to have success, we want to make level threes and level fours in athletics as well. And as you see, um, I just kind of went through the history of South Creek High School. We became, we became South Creek High School in two thousand and ten, I just took some sports that they had and just looked at a winning season, you know, that means over five hundred. Last winning season in football was in two thousand and eighteen, last winning season in volleyball, two thousand and nineteen, varsity boys' basketball, two thousand and fifteen. The girls' basketball never had a winning season in the s- history of the school. Um, last winning season in baseball was in two thousand and fifteen, and the last winning season, two thousand and sixteen. So what that's telling you is, a lot of the, the current seniors at South Creek High School, a lot of them, this is their first season experiencing having a winning season, just having success and just winning, so I think it was a, it was a great experience for them. And, um, just want to show you guys of the benefits of athletics coming together as our Martin County. Anybody have any que- excuse me, there's no questions, thank you.
Jot down those questions. So, we've spent some time sharing this, this current state of South Creek High School, and we started delving into, um, what the difference looks like since we have merged due to the teacher shortage. And so, at this time, we're going to share some of the student welfare benefits that consolidation would have on our students and has had through the actual merge thus far. So the first thing we're going to address is our student club opportunities. And I also want to share with the board as Adrian's coming, oftentimes when a school is consolidated or closed, it is because of the state of the building. That is not the reason for South Creek, um, being at a state where we need to look at consolidation. This reason is because of lack of educational opportunities and of quality educational experience. And so, in our study, we're not focusing on the state of the building, we're focusing on the teacher vacancies, the educational quality, and the overall educational experience for our students. So now, we're going to look at, um, what South Creek had with clubs versus what they're getting now and their overall educational experience.
Just kidding, I need to click, click on that, right? Yeah, it's up there. Oh, it's just mine. Yes, okay, thank you. Um, so, in conversations that we have had comparing, um, the different opportunities, as Coach McGill just, just stated, we, um, we're trying really hard to provide a full experience. Um, we talked a lot about the academics and how important that that is and the variety of opportunities there. He's brought in athletics, we're also looking at other curricular opportunities, uh, uh, other extracurricular opportunities, excuse me, um, and clubs is one of those. Prior to our merger, there were no clubs at South Creek High School. No children, like, we were, we were running home rooms and club days, first semester at Riverside, um, once a week, um, children were having opportunities to go be involved in different extracurricular activities, and then they did not have the opportunity at all at South Creek High School. The only ones of those students that were able to do that were ones who were coming here to the Innovation Campus or happened to be on the Riverside Campus. So, we've got, um, comparing that, a list of the clubs that Riverside High School students have had the opportunity to participate in, and we've actually, since the merger, have, um, have added a robotics club as well. Um, so, just to give you a comparison there of the opportunities. And then Ms. Sarah, I'm doing this all kinds of wrong, thank you.
I got you, you're good.
Sarah's going to come talk to us as well about.
All right, so we're going to go back, there we go, and talk about student government.
Okay, and Mr. Doug, if you will, is he right in there?
He's got it.
If you will go to the first, um, SGA slide to the left. During this very unique time, the combined staff has worked very hard to help both student groups maintain their identities while still becoming one group. And so, they have, this year, we have had, this semester, we have had a Student Government Association group from Riverside and from South Creek. You see their leadership for both schools here. And if we'll go to the next one, we also have had their own class officers. Again, until, during this unique time, they've been able to still maintain their leadership, but they can pull together as another group as well. And then we have a large, at-large group for Student Government Association, which has been fostering some amazing relationships, and this is just the beginning. They already have plans in place to work towards next semester, how to even improve it more.
And so, for student government, they've gone from no student government to actually having the overall school officers of president, vice president, secretary, treasurer, to then having grade-level officers for each freshman, sophomore, junior, senior, to then having the at-large members, um, the SGA serves to be the voice of the students within the school. All right, now we're going to talk a little bit about schedule flexibility.
This is the last time you got to hear from me, I promise. Um, so, just to kind of recap, in looking at our classes, when, when we merged, we went from having a lot of deficits to now having eighteen core teachers combined altogether. Um, prior to the merger, South Creek alone had twelve core sections offered, and now they have, um, fifty-nine core sections offered altogether when we merged the two schools. There are a combined total of seventeen elective teachers. Pre-merger, South Creek was offered nine elective slots, and now, we have fifty elective options to choose from, fifty slots for electives.
All right, so we have a, a very, um, different picture, and if you remember when we brought this to you initially, um, one of the key me, uh, reasons for the merge was the teacher vacancy in that students had tremendous holes in their schedule, they were not able to get the classes that they needed in order to, um, to progress throughout high school, and I'm actually going to show you some numbers on that in just a few minutes. But also, they weren't able to get the classes that they wanted. So classes that actually correspond with what they want to do in their future career. And so, you can see a big difference there where now we're talking about meeting with students individually, them telling us what they want to be, and then us giving them classes that they actually want to be in, which is pretty, um, spectacular compared to where we were in having to fit the students into our schedule. Next up, I just wanted to show you the difference in tutoring opportunities. Um, South Creek High School did not offer any sort of tutoring, um, intervention. Um, now, we are offering core tutoring in math, science, and English. So students went from not being able to get that extra support to we are offering, um, core tutoring support in each of these core areas. Next, we're going to look and consider our, uh, support for exceptional children.
Can you cre- click the increase?
Wait, wait, I think, uh.
Did you skip something? No, that's the right place if we're going.
Yes, we're, we're good, yep, that was the right one, yep.
Can you click on the incre- that's it?
Yep.
Okay. So, at South Creek, we had two exceptional children teachers, and those teachers were teaching, instead of teaching three classes where they had a larger number of students, they were actually teaching four periods a day to reduce the number of students that they had in their classroom. And the continuum of service, um, which is how we serve EC students, so we have different settings, we have a, a separate setting for students who need, um, very intensive EC services, we have a resource setting for students who need some support with, um, different academic skills, math, reading, it could be social-emotional, and then we have, um, services where students are not pulled out of class very much, and that's more of a consultative service basis. So, when we combine schools, we now have five teachers who are, have the ability to teach that resource and that, um, consultative service basis, which means that we can look at our resource time differently for our EC students. So instead of them having to come to the EC classroom to get their support, we have enough teachers that we can divide up, and some of those teachers can go push into the regular classrooms at the high school setting and serve those students within that classroom. So they're getting their entire support within the classroom and not having to use one of their elective times as a, to get their EC support. So for our h- high school students, they miss eight elec- if they need support in the EC classroom and they're in, in a regular schedule, they miss eight electives that they don't get to choose what they need in order to get that continued support. With teachers pushing into the classroom and not, the kids not having to come out to those EC teachers, that increases the number of lec- electives that our EC students have the opportunity to take. So that's a big win for those students.
All right. And I did want to go back to slide sixteen, Mr. Bullock, um, just to review, also, I didn't mention the college class availability, but having students here so close to the m- community college is also a huge benefit for the children. Um, we are working with the community college on actually taking students to them, but also working on the, with the community college on them bringing students to us, um, or br- them bringing their teachers to us so that we can actually have, um, face-to-face options. All students don't learn well with online classes, and so, for those students who need that face-to-face option, we are working with Martin Community to be able to offer that fluidly. Um, also, athletics, we're not going to review this again, but, um, Coach McGill did share that, um, we are better together. As he mentioned, um, over the last several years, there has been a decline at South Creek, and this actually is the first time that seniors at the school have ever had a win in season. So the merger was the first time these students have actually got the opportunity to experience what it's like to have a winning season in a sport, in addition to having a lot more options to choose from. And then next up, we are going to explore the CT access. Um, it's important to note, and then I'm going to come back to yours in a second, okay? Um, for the CTE access, um, it is important to note that when the IC opened back in two thousand and nineteen, twenty twenty, it was in the five-year plan at that time to close South Creek High School. And the reason, based on the research that I've done, that, that was a big part of the five-year plan is because all, the plan was for all CTE classes to be here at the IC, which meant that students in Robertsonville did not have access to these classes, that's why South Creek, how it came to only have one CTE elective at the school. So I did want to provide that insight as well, that the original intent of the five-year plan back in two thousand and twenty was to close South Creek High School when the Innovation Campus opened. Now, the school system cannot afford to operate two full CTE programs, one here and one there. So the decision was made at that time to have the CTE program housed here. And Mr. Guard is going to share a little bit more about what that looks like for South Creek and what it looks like for Riverside as well as combined.
Thank you, Dr. White. Uh, just a quick overview, so you see that out of the twenty-four, or the thirty-three seniors in the class of two thousand and twenty-three, that twenty-four of them were completers. Of course, a deep dive into that shows that sixty-three percent of them, or fifteen students, were part of the food and nutrition, and the main reason is that as of fall of two thousand and twenty-two, that was the only full-time, uh, CTE position up there. Also, you have, so with the other breakdown, you had two students that completed the Health Professional Pathway, one that completed the pant- Plant Science Pathway, two that completed the Power Structure and Technology Pathway, two that completed the Animal Science Pathway, and two that completed the Martin Community College Justice Pathway. Well, with the Martin Community College Justice Pathway, that one was online courses, but since they're a CTE completer, they count in our numbers. The Animal Science, Power Structure and Technology, and Plant Science, at one point, we had a full-time ag teacher up there at South Creek High School, and those kids took, took those multiple courses in different sections, but the challenge was, is that a kid may take Ag Mechanics One as a ninth grader in the fall, but because of scheduling issues, might have to wait till the spring of their sophomore year before they can get into second class because classes were having to be alternated with only one teacher and a limited number of resources. And the Health Science Profes- uh, Pathway, those students were limited because they weren't able to take all of the courses that they needed to come down and have access to the CNA, uh, program that Ms. Ward, uh, teaches because you have to have a certified nurse to run that program, we only had one in the district at that time, so that limited their access. Another thing is, even though we had twenty-four out of thirty-three, a CTE completer is not reported till they're a senior, but if they take, say, uh, Foods and Nutrition One and Two as a freshman or sophomore, they are already a completer and they've got it done, but they just don't show up until, uh, they're a senior. So that's why those numbers look that. Doug, if you'll go to the next slide, all right? So this, these, this chart here compares two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three. And of course, as you know, in the fall of twenty-two is when the Innovation Campus was, was open completely, and that's when we was open completely, and that's when we brought all of our teachers down here. Uh, so, and like I said, that was part of our five-year plan. Well, two main reasons that that was done intentionally, not just part of the five-year plan, is one, because of, we at our teaching staff is months of employment. So Martin County Schools, when I first came on board, got a hundred and sixty months of employment. Now we get a hundred and fifty-six. And the way it works, it doesn't say, well, you get this many for South Creek Middle, this many for South Creek High, this many for Riverside Middle, this many for Riverside High. What they do is, here's your months, make them work. And so we were not able to offer all the programs full-time, what we needed to, at both schools. So we put all our eggs in the Innovation Campus basket to make sure that not only were we providing the classes that we need to provide, provide teachers that were quality and could be uh full-time positions. The other part is our decline in federal dollars. Once again, our state fourteen and our federal seventeen are all tied into our enrollment numbers. And so they give you that block of money, and they don't say, alright, well, you're going to get seventy-four thousand dollars this past year, and you've got to send, you know, thirty-seven here and thirty-seven here, and then whatever you do with the middle schools. No, it was basically, here's your money, you make it work. So when we devised our plan, we have to take into account the middle schools, and as you've seen this past year with what we've tried to do to make those high-quality programs at both middle schools, we also had to provide for the high schools, and we were not able to do that equitably and the best way possible by trying to spread them between multiple schools. Another reason the positions went down is as the South Creek High School CTE staff retired, we opened those positions, but we had a couple of issues. One was the aged facilities. To get our kitchen back up to snuff at South Creek High School was going to cost twenty-four thousand dollars just in CTE dollars. And then it was going to cost the maintenance department a fortune with that because what they were going to have to do is, the kitchen couldn't pull enough power, the ventilation wasn't strong enough to pass code because we had somebody from the Restaurant Association come in, the plumbing could not handle the capacity that we were going to need to do, and we're going to have to have all new gas lines to run the stoves and all of those other areas. So as you can see, as those areas declined into twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, it was basically because it was not only a, a resource issue, an equity issue, it was an issue of the facility at large. So if you'll go to the next one. Okay. So on this one, it talks about, um, one of the things about the Innovation Campus and the Riverside High School campus is when we started doing interviews all through this process, once we combined them in the fall of twenty-two down here, everything except for our foods programs, it was very easy. Once they realized that they were coming here, uh, or at Riverside, we filled all of our stuff in less than a month. And, and I've, and the other opens at South Creek before we pulled them down, one, we had a sub for eighteen months, uh, the business position, which was the previous teacher that had retired, which we were able to convince to come back to continue to work until we could, till we could fill that position. Uh, one of the things with the CTE classes is the proximity to community business that has been a big deal. For example, Allied Health, uh, we're near healthcare facilities that our students for their CNA program can have access to. The AgroScience, we're near FSA, Cooperative Extension, and Farm Implement Supply Company, so they were able to participate in that. And the Computer Science has been near the Technology Department, which, you know, as we've gone through with those programs, which has been an asset and a benefit. And finally, on the last slide that we've got, is that as you can see, all the reasons on the left and the right-hand side of why Riverside High School and Innovation Campus have done so well together this year, but in a, just since the combination in January, the positive benefits have been equitable access for internships. We went from no internships to twenty-five in the past year, and that's because of our plan with hiring Mr. Nguyen. We've had equitable access for students interested in the medical field, updated facilities that are closer to industry standards, a business advisory board that can assist with the preparation of Martin, the Martin County workforce, the Career and College Fair, uh, collaboration for teachers, an additional career development position so we can actually get the, out there with those businesses and try to hook our students up with those opportunities, and participation in our CTSOs such as FFA and FCLA. And not only are they successful now, but their numbers are continuing to grow. And another thing that has made it, made this work really well is, um, I want to thank, um, the Guidance Department and, uh, the leadership at the combined school at this point. Um, they have done an outstanding job of merging all this together and making this work, and it's been a pleasure as a county office person to be able to work uh with Mr. Mizell and his team. And I've had the opportunity, uh, Coach McGill and I, the last couple of weeks, work a little bit closer with them and to watch what they do and how they do it. Uh, they have taken this, uh, you know, uh, merger combining of the two schools, and they have made it into a real team atmosphere. And I think they, as far as on the CTE side, and they should be commended for that.
Thank you so much, Mr. Guard. Um, I know that was a lot of information, um, but our CTE program has been a tremendous asset. Uh, we've expanded tremendously this year in our partnerships and our opportunities for students, as well as our early college opportunities. Um, whatever it may be, you can get it at Martin County Schools. You are not locked in to only certain pathways. Every pathway is available to you, and that's not only, only for those high school CTE completers, but for those college classes as well. If you want to be a welder, we're ready to work with Martin Community, get you through our CTE program, and then get you connected through the Early College Program with Martin Community to make that happen, or HVAC, or electrical, or whatever it may be. Um, and so we're excited about finally being able to provide our students equitable opportunities for their future. Alright, next slide.
So we've talked about the student welfare. Once the merger has occurred, there has been some improvement in the instructional practice and teacher welfare. Just as Dr. Bowen mentioned earlier, um, teaching in isolation is a hard thing to sell to a new teacher, even a teacher trying to switch counties. So since the merger, we have now seen an increase in our instructional practices. One, that we are now offering teacher collaboration in the sense of, we have vertically-aligned curriculum that people are having common planning. We have teachers that are going into other teachers' classrooms and doing simple group assi- um, assessments and activities where we're pairing off. We have collaborative planning, we're doing co-teaching, co-development of lessons. Professional learning communities have been created. We are modeling our instruction off of data-driven pieces and modeling and participating in research-based best instructional practices. Um, we have had the establishment of departments. Um, when you're a one-person department, it's kind of hard to be a leader. Um, but we are seeing some developing teacher leaders in the two schools, once they've been merged. You'll notice that we have a collaborative environment. You see teachers going and saying, not only just in that content for the teacher next door, what are you doing differently than what you have done in the past? Um, if you come to the high school now, just because you're a math teacher, it's not all just math. We are doing a lot with science and some other things. There's a lot of cross-curricular planning going on in the PLCs. We're also developing a, or fostering a positive school culture. It's not a South Creek or Riverside anymore, it's Martin County Schools, and we're here to serve those students. Um, for the first time, we have tutoring built into our school day for our EOC-tested areas in math, science, and English. We are offering after-school tutoring two times a week with a certified math teacher that's also in that EOC, that is in the EOC along with a host of other teachers that are staying after. And I don't think that was happening in the past, one, just because of logistics and kids being across the county. Um, there is a lot of things happening. Um, for once, when you walk in, it's a team mentality, not a salad. And that's a big shift for a high school setting.
Alright, and Board members, forgive me for not introducing. Um, this is Gwen Houston. She is our six-twelve math instructional coach and has been just an amazing, outstanding asset to Martin County Schools. Um, helped, helped us adopt a new curriculum for our high school um, that's proven especially beneficial. And she's the one that is in there, um, supporting the professional learning communities, um, building that team atmosphere, working with our teachers on pacing and standards alignment, and all of those instructional pieces that you really need a team of teachers. And you're able to move further more quickly when you've got that team together. So shout out to her and the instructional department um, for all of the work that has been happening with that. Next slide, and the next slide. Now we're going to delve into a little bit of the flip side of the discipline. We looked at where discipline was at South Creek, but now we're going to look at where it is.
So I am happy to report that this is a little bit brighter side. Um, we are looking at the merge and looking between Semester One and Semester Two, and we reduced discipline by a hundred and fifty incidents um, for the South Creek High School students. And if you look at that compared to Riverside High School in Semester One with three hundred and seventeen, um, major incidences and four hundred and seventy-six number of students with South Creek High School Semester One at two eighty-two and two hundred and forty-eight students. But then you look at them combined, the combined total is four hundred and eighty-eight incidences and seven hundred and twenty-four students. So that was an overall reduced percentage of fifty-three percent. That is outstanding. These, the kids are, you know, they're learning to be together, they like being together, they're behaving better, um, and the teachers are also, um, building those teams and relationships with those students.
One thing, we did include the extra chart to the right just to share that there were more referrals at South Creek High School pre-merger than there were students. So you can see, um, South Creek High School Semester One had two hundred and eighty-two referrals for only two hundred and forty-eight students. So that's a big red flag that there were more referrals than there were students. But again, um, since the merger, basically overnight, the um, discipline has improved drastically, and again, we do see a fifty-three percent decrease. Um, and that's due to a lot of the things you're hearing tonight. Um, the quality instruction, the structure within the school, the positive environment, and that, just the overall quality experience. Alright, next slide. So as we look at the overall, or the complete overview of student welfare, um, it's important to note, some, one may say, well, well, if you, you had tutoring here, why don't you just add it there? If you had CTE here, why don't you just add it there? If you had this opportunity here, why don't you just add it there? And it's important to understand that funding for school opportunities is generated by ADM, your average daily membership. If you don't have the student numbers, then we don't have the budget to support the extra opportunities. Over the years, and I'm going to show you in this presentation in just a few minutes, the enrollment at South Creek has drastically declined. And as this declined, we have not been able to support um, all of the extra opportunities that are needed for students. But unfortunately, the school does not generate enough ADM to create two equitable experiences for our high school students. Um, they cannot offer the needed face-to-face course options, electives, nor access to highly qualified staff. So you've seen here how we have increased, um, both elective opportunities and core options for our students. You've heard about how they're being individually scheduled. You've heard about the electives that are being offered to them, and you've heard about the high-quality teachers that now stand in front of them. Again, the, they do lack access to clubs and athletics. It's all driven by the average daily membership. The merge has proven that a combined school offers more opportunities, a better overall environment, reduced discipline, anticipated higher graduation rates, and a stronger academic support for all children. At this time, we're going to move into geographic considerations, which is specifically outlined in our, um, general statute. So here, you have a picture of a heat map of where students live in Martin County. So this outlines, um, the purple is the most heavily populated, followed by the red, and then the blue. And so this clearly shows you that the majority of our students live around the Williamson area. That is very clearly the most heavily populated, um, area of our county. So some questions that have arose, well, why don't we bus the, um, for example, the, the Williamson kids to the South Creek area? But you can see here that that would not be physically responsible. The cost to bus all of the majority of our children to where the majority, minority of our children are would not be physically responsible. We could not afford to take all of those children and bus them to the other end of the county. Whereas you can see in the South Creek District, it is much more sparsely populated. And we are going to share with you tonight what the budget would look like if we do continue the merge and we do bus the South Creek District students to Riverside High School. But I did want to share, um, where our students are living, um, what our heat map shows us. Uh, in addition, the bus ride is about twenty minutes longer for some students, but it's actually shorter for many students due to where our district lines are. Many of our students that are districted to go to South Creek actually live closer to Riverside. And so you're going to see that in some of the financial analysis. So yes, for some students that live up in this direction, you know, up towards, um, Higgood, in the furthest corner, it will be an increased bus ride of about twenty minutes. But some of our students are actually already live closer to Riverside and have a further bus ride to the South Creek District. Alright, at this time, Ms. Moore is going to come up and talk a little bit about the, the cost based on that heat map that you just observed.
When I took our, um, figures for this year, and these are actual expenditures, um, our total expenditures from August twenty-eighth, which was the first day of school, until March of twenty twenty-four, were, um, you can see up there, six hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven ninety. Then you break that down to the monthly cost for that same period, and it's approximately ninety-seven, eight twenty-seven. The monthly cost per bus for forty-four buses was twenty-two, twenty-three. And of course, this figure is going to be high at the end of the year. We spent a lot of money, um, this year with the merger, um, and what we're doing. We figure if we merge totally and we don't bring buses, we don't duck in and drop off at middle school, but we go straight from that area straight onto Williamson, come straight to Riverside High School, that we can eliminate two buses from that area. Um, and that, that would give us an approximate savings of about forty-four thousand dollars. Um, I could eliminate seat time because right now, what we're having is, they get to, to, in the mornings, they duck into the middle school, they have to wait for all the buses to get there, so we got buses sitting with, um, drivers are just sitting, baby, basically babysitting until we can get all the buses at the school. Then they, um, six of them, five of them come up here. The other three buses, the, the kids disperse off of those buses and get on those buses. We get to Riverside High School. When we get to Riverside High School, the bus, the drivers then have to get off, get back on the shuttle bus, they get paid to ride the shuttle bus back to South Creek High School. Same thing happens at two thirty, two, two twenty-five. They all have to meet at the high school, get back on the shuttle bus, get back up here to Riverside High School, get on their buses, and wait for their kids to come out of Riverside High School. So we have a lot of idle time that we're paying for, but they're on the clock at that point, so we have to pay them. Um, so we can, we think we can eliminate about eighteen thousand dollars of that, um, cost if we come directly to Riverside High School. In order to do this, though, we would have to, um, keep in mind that we would have to take the middle school students and actually put them on the bus with our K-five kids because we need those, but we don't have enough buses, nor do we have enough bus drivers for everybody to have their own bus. That would, that really would be a nightmare. So in order to eliminate those two buses on that side, we're going to have to add kids onto the other buses, but we can do that, we think, without adding any more buses on the road.
So the total savings for transportation, if, um, we do consolidate the high schools, would be sixty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. Alright, next slide. So when we are considering, um, ge- the ge- geographic considerations, um, some things that come to mind from the team as we were conducting the study, we will continue to operate the building. So we want the community to understand, we want everybody to understand that South Creek High School building will continue to operate. Currently, the middle school, of course, is in that building as well as our alternative, uh, our alternative learning program. And we are working to expand our alternative learning program. We want to make sure that every child has the exact right fit in Martin County schools. Um, we are expanding that program to include day treatment. So we will be offering day treatment for students that need the extra mental health support, that need the extra behavioral support, or whatever it may be, day treatment will also be housed in that building. And we just want, you know, a failing school does not work to support a thriving community. So we will continue to operate that building. The building will continue to be in use, um, with or without South Creek High School as a part of it. As we continue on, we want to look at our anticipated enrollment. So on the next slide, you are going to see our enrollment for a, over a, at least a ten-year period and our anticipated enrollment for the next ten years. So what you're going to see here is currently an analysis of our pre-K. So we have forty-four total students, um, in the South Creek district in pre-K. Seventeen of those are Head Start, twenty-seven of them are ours. Kindergarten, we have sixty-three students, forty-eight first grades, thirty-eight second grades, fifty-three, um, third grades. And so you can see so on and so forth. On average, we have around fifty students per grade level. Some have a little less, some have a little more, but I'll draw your attention to our freshman class. And you see that there's ninety-nine students in the freshman class. However, there aren't ninety-nine students when those students started kindergarten. And so when I reached out, I was like, wait, something's wrong in our enrollment. This is definitely an outlier, it doesn't fit in the data. And the counselors did an investigation, they looked up every child. And the reason we have ninety-nine freshmen is because of the huge number of retentions at South Creek High School. Many of these students did not get the classes that they needed or did not pass the classes that they were given. And so a large number of those students are retentions. They have been retained in the ninth grade. When you drop up, keep going up, you'll see that we have a smaller number of seniors. Again, because our students are not matriculating through the school in four years, as noted earlier when we looked at our graduation rate for South Creek High School. That's definitely evident in these numbers. Moving on to the next slide, you'll see our student enrollment trend comprehensively at South Creek High School for the next ten years. So you see this year, we have two hundred and forty-seven students. Now next year, you see that we have two seventy-nine, but I want to remind you that that is because of the large freshman class. It's inflated due to the large number of retentions that were occurring at South Creek High School. So as you matriculate through and you get the large class out, but I caution you that we could see that trend again if we aren't able to correct the opportunities and options for students all the way down to the thirty-two, thirty-three school year where we have a projective, projected enrollment of a hundred and ninety-three. When we are looking at this, if you reflect back on two thousand twelve, the average enrollment at South Creek High School was about three hundred thirty-nine students. And so you can see, over the last ten-year period, we've dropped from about three, three thirty-nine, three forty-ish all the way down to two forty-seven. And another ten years, it is projected that we will drop to one ninety-three. And I remind you that ADM drives opportunity. We are funded per student. So that is a serious consideration for the board as we are moving forward. Moving along, we're going to look at hardship considerations. This again is outlined in the general statute for things that the board needs to, um, deeply consider before making its decision. So when we are looking at the hardship considerations, of course, we have to look at transportation. It will be increased bus time for some students. However, it will also be decreased for many students who live closer to Riverside, but were districted for South Creek. We also want to ensure that parents have access to attend school events. So looking at the South Creek district and making sure we're working with families to be able to attend school, school events if they don't have transportation. Considering community concern, how will closing the school affect the economic development of Robertsonville? So, and then also for the board, does the economic development of Robertsonville actually negatively impact the school? The lack of opportunities also promotes decreased enrollment. So as the opportunities in the community have declined, the enrollment has also declined. There's no recreation department in the area. On the other side, some families do like the small school feel. However, it was apparent that many were not informed about the negative impacts on the overall educational experience that were occurring. A large part of the districted students for South Creek withdrew from the school between two thousand and twelve and two thousand thirteen, sorry, two thousand twelve and two thousand seventeen to attend Beargrass Charter School. That is represented in the decline in ADM. This began the hardship to keep the school open. You saw a significant decline around, um, two thousand and sixteen. In addition, when we're considering hardship, we want to look at school choice. So where, we are a district of choice. Parents can choose to attend the school that best meets the needs of their families. They fill out the form and the request to central office. And so this outlines for the board, the quest, the requests that we have received for this past school year. So you can see that twenty-eight students who were districted for South Creek requested to go to Riverside Middle School. Whereas only three students that were districted for Riverside requested to go to South Creek. Also, the majority of those three students are connected to employees who work in the South Creek schools. When considering Riverside High School, twenty-two South Creek districted students requested to go to Riverside High School, whereas only one Riverside High School districted students, student requested to go to South Creek. And that is because his parent was an employee who worked at South Creek High School. So again, um, this does go to show you that, uh, we've received many more students requesting to leave the district than to attend the district. And now, uh, the statute calls for us to consider any other areas that are important for the board. And one of those that are very important for the board is the financial analysis of cost of operations for South Creek High School. And so I'm going to invite Ms. Centora to go over that with you.
So this is just an analysis of what it would cost if we were to potentially use fund balance to fund some of these positions. So the number of positions that we're going to have to eliminate for fiscal year twenty-five is twenty-seven. This is due to state and federal funding shortfalls. So nine point five, nine and a half, um, of those positions are South Creek High School positions. One of them is a shared position, um, with South Creek High and the middle school. So you can see the majority of those positions are from South Creek. Currently, at the end of fiscal year twenty-three, our fund balance was four point two million. We did have to appropriate for fiscal year twenty-four, eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand of that. And that's just to be able to, um, cover the shortfalls of the local budget. So we are estimating at the end of this fiscal year that we should have roughly three point three million available in fund balance. If we were to try to fund all of these positions that we are having to eliminate, our fund balance would be exhausted in two point one five years. This is if we had no other issues come up that we would have to use fund balance for. And that's not a long time. Fund balance is really supposed to be kept for, um, emergency purposes for the school district. If we have anything that comes up, an HVAC unit that needs to be replaced, any large project, um, emergency, that's what our fund balance is for. It's not intended to be used for, um, reoccurring expenses, especially salaries. We don't want to have to depend on that to maintain these positions.
And so, um, one thing, just a final note on the finances. Both our previous finance director, Ms. Candy Tilly, as well as Ms. Emily Centora have shared the same synopsis that, um, what has allowed South Creek to continue financially over the last several years is ESAR funding. So when COVID happened and the school system was given additional ESAR money, that has what, what has allowed the school system to continue to operate in the capacity that it has. However, prior to that, it was noted that we were going to have to make some decisions. And so as we are prepared to come out of COVID, um, as you know, this is the last year. That money has to be encumbered by September of this year. That funding is gone away, all of our money is, um, spent or encumbered to be spent. We will have to make some tough decisions as far as our budget. And if the board decides to go back to South Creek High School, then we would have to make some significant deep cuts in other schools and in other areas across the district. So as an overview, um, what our team found as we have completed this over the last several months is that children in the South Creek district have fewer opportunities and less academic success. That is what we have shown you tonight. The, what we were offering our children was not equitable. And nor do we have the finances to create two equitable environments with our current ADM. The challenge is limited access, um, limited academic access, athletics, extracurricular opportunities. How do we generate those with a small number of staff that we have? We know we have vacancies, but even on a full staff, it will be difficult to generate equitable opportunities. And so the solution, um, that our team has come from, come to and that we feel is in the best interest of the children is to consolidate to one high school and offer every student more. That concludes the presentation of our case study. Um, and we welcome any questions at this time.
Yes, I have some questions.
Go right ahead.
Okay. The first one I have is about the clubs at South Creek High School. I guess I want to know, how did we let that happen? Because to me, that's on us, that has nothing to do with numbers, like what, you know, us.
Absolutely, and I agree, Ms. Purvis. And so as we've been researching this and team that's been here longer than me, please feel free to, to chime in. But it had been a gradual decline over the last several years to where we had gotten to a point with, as staff would turn over and were doing certain things for students.
We didn't replace it.
We didn't replace it. And so the student opportunities just began to decline and it began to decline. And then the vision for those things began to be lost. Because when children don't see those opportunities, they don't think about those opportunities, they don't desire those opportunities, and so the conversation goes away. And so I've asked that very question, Ms. Purvis, how, how did we get here? That was one of the critical pieces that staff shared with me. And I welcome any other input from our team as far as how did that happen? That, that's basically it.
Okay. Uh, my next question is where, I didn't see the twenty nineteen, two thousand data for South Creek. So I saw the data, which it said we, it's a D for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, then twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. But then if I look down, it was a C for like four or five years. So I'm missing the twenty nineteen, twenty, yeah, the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
So that was COVID, so there is no data for those years because the state didn't do data during COVID. So in twenty twenty-three, it was a D, twenty twenty-two, it was a D. And then it skips to two thousand nineteen where it was a D. The other years were COVID years where the state did not generate any data.
Okay, so what is Riverside High School for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two?
I don't have that in front of me. I'd be glad, my computer just died, but I'll be glad to pull that up and share it with you. I can tell you that Riverside High School is a D now. However, their performance grade is higher than South Creek's performance grade. But it also is a D school. Off the top of my head, I want to say their overall score, and it is a fifteen-point scale, the team is wanting as well.
I tried to Google it while I was up here, but it's some kind of firewall. Because as I, as I remember sitting on the board, they're, they're Ds, both of them.
Yes, yes.
It's not, I'm, I'm just trying to be transparent.
Yes, both schools are D, low-performing schools, absolutely. However, Riverside High School has seen significant improvement this year. Their mid-year data.
So this year, you mean merged?
Well, actually, prior to the merge, they had significant improvement. They're at South Creek, and you guys help me chime in, but Riverside's mid-year data was actually better than their entire school year last year. So we had more students pass the EOC at Riverside, um, High School in January than we did the entire school year last year. Also, their discipline has seen stark increases, the overall culture and climate of the school. So that school was moving in a more healthy direction. And if we generated data based on the mid-year results, it would actually be higher than the end-of-year results for the entire year last year. And we still have another whole semester of data to actually add to that. So what our trajectory shows us, and my instructional people are nodding, is that Riverside High School is on the right track. What we're seeing at South Creek pre-merge is the exact opposite. South Creek was not moving in a more positive direction. It was staying very stagnant. And you could see from the results, over the past several years, we've only had three students pass an EOC at that school. Two, two students pass an EOC at that school. And that was the trajectory that we were seeing at mid-year as well. Now, since we've been merged, and my instructional team, feel free to chime in, what have we seen instructionally since we've been merged?
So just going back and looking at your South Creek Math One data, if you had Z work positions these last semester, which were they were true to South Creek. This semester alone, we have doubled what they've had in the last two or three years in South Creek Middle. And we are in, if things were staying the same track, you're looking to, in some cases, triple what the predicted was. And a lot of it's because you have now quality staff, that you've got intentional tutoring that's being placed, it just was not available because you didn't have the budget or staff to do it. And you're seeing the teacher collaborate. It's a much more rigorous, strong instructional piece that's happening. And the, the, the teachers are there, they're not separate anymore, they're not solid. And they're pulling off each other's strengths.
And so at South Creek, not only did we have quite a few vacancies, but they were already so small that it was difficult to collaborate and learn and go, grow and professionally develop them together. But now that they're with whole departments and teams of people, it's changed the whole, that are certified, that are certified real teachers, it has worked to grow the department. And I'm not here to say that this is some sort of overnight fix, because it's not. This didn't happen overnight and it's not going to be fixed overnight. But all we can tell you is what we are seeing now compared to what we have, have been seeing before and what we were seeing was a school that was not being successful. And so we have done something about it. Progress is impossible without change and we're seeing progress.
I have a question about, my mic is in the room, please, there it is. I have a question about, um, the disciplinary. It's been repeated, the problems that, you know, that's happening at South Creek. When does leadership play a part in that?
Yeah, absolutely. So I do think that, um, we have had some issues at South Creek that stronger leadership absolutely could work to support. And that is why we're seeing such a better outcome at Riverside is because it does have strong leadership and there are structures in place and there's an infrastructure in place. And so, uh, I do believe that stronger leadership, um, could positively impact the discipline at South Creek. But I also think having stronger teachers, having more opportunities to take courses that they're interested in, having counselors one-on-one talk to them about their future and what they want to be when they grow up, being able to see beyond, um, some of their current situations are not situations that those children want to be in forever. And so we're giving them an opportunity to see beyond that on a lot of different tiers. And that is working to change the discipline. Because children have hope, they have opportunity, and that is changing the whole culture and climate of the school. But absolutely, leadership does play a part in that.
And then, um, well, I have two more questions. Okay, my next question is, if we had enough core teachers or whatever teachers that we needed at South Creek, Okay, my next question is, if we had enough core teachers, or whatever teachers that we needed at South Creek High School, would we be having this conversation? Like, would we still need to merge simply because?
If we had not experienced the teacher vacancy, we would not have merged mid-year. However, when we started budget season, it was apparent. Our Finance Director immediately came to me when she started budget season to say, "We can't afford this, we cannot afford." And Candy Tilly had shared that previously the finances were going to eventually be an issue post-COVID for South Creek High School. And I can go back to 2020 and answer that question, when the Board in the five-year plan said that South Creek High School needed to close. Part of that was financial at that time. Because as you have decreased enrollment, you have a limited number of funds to operate within, and you lose equity between the two schools, and that's what's happening. As we declined in enrollment, gradually, the funding also changed, which impacted the equity of opportunities between the two schools. And then we started to also experience a teacher shortage in large part because of many of the things Dr. Bowen was sharing. This is not just Martin County schools, that was a national, that is a national issue. And then we get to where we are. So it's not a, a one, you know, just a black and white one answer. It's, it's kind of a trickle-down effect that has been going on for years here with South Creek High School.
Okay, and what is the day treatment?
Day treatment is comprehensive interventions for students who need more. So students who need intense behavior therapy, mental health support, we are going to be working with an outside agency who will actually be in the school full-time, full-time is six hours a day, to provide students who need day treatment options through licensed therapists, counselors, and mental health providers within our school setting. So they will actually be housed at South Creek High School, providing our alternative learning students with those services. So alternative learning is not a place you go for behavior, right? Not, you may be there because you have some behavior issues, but we want to do something about it. We don't want to put you there permanently, we want to give you the therapy and the services that you need in order to get you going on the right track in order to be a successful citizen. So day treatment is going to be a piece of our alternative learning program as well. This is also huge for the district. Like, that's a special announcement in itself that we are going to be able to offer these services. And we're going to talk more about that later.
Any other questions?
Yeah, can we get the, you may not, can tell me that, can we get the out-of-school suspension rate for South Creek and Riverside pre-merger? And then for, just for me, can you define what a small, I keep hearing a small school. I just want to know what, what small school, what the number is. And then my last question is, what was my last question? Small school. Oh, when did we start offering the tutoring at Riverside High School?
So we had, I'll let Gwen, I'll, we'll start from the last question and work our way back.
So we acquired the math tutor in December.
So merger, so we didn't have anything pre-merger, okay.
Yes, we did, we, we started her pre-merger. Because the merger didn't happen until the end of January.
And, but we only had math.
Okay.
And then we acquired the other two subjects in the past.
But that was already in the vision for that school?
For Riverside, okay.
Yes.
And then for Ms. Cynthia, and I'll be quiet after this, I promise. So I keep hearing about the children, how early they have to get on the bus. And so I've been told they board the bus at 5:30 a.m. So my question is, I want to know the earliest time that, yes ma'am? Okay, so I just want to dispel, okay.
Earliest time somebody's getting on the bus is 6:05.
Okay, thank you.
And the rest of them are mostly getting on the bus about 6:30 and back, but that's early.
So nobody's getting on the bus in Martin County at 5:30?
We don't even have a bus that goes, that starts at 5:30. All of our buses pretty much start at 6:00.
Thank you.
All right, and let's work our way back. Dr. Bowen, speci, is there, do you want to discuss the small school question, or Emily?
What defines a small school?
Right, and it's not a speci-
I don't know that there is a definition for what defines a small school. So we look at that in terms of just our schools within our district.
Okay, so would Jamesville Elementary be a small school?
That is a small school.
Okay.
And, and they, and to be very honest, some of those things that I talked about in recruiting people and teachers and, and the closeness of that community, that is a very-
It's a positive, right? So-
It is a positive on some, in some respects, but for outsiders coming in, it can be a difficult situation as a teaching district.
Okay.
And the, the nature of a high school curriculum is very different from elementary. So part of the infrastructure for elementary schools is to maintain small elementary schools within the community. It is much transparent, it's much cheaper to run an elementary school than it is a high school. When you get to high school, and you start planning for careers, and you need all of these elective options, and you need CTE options, and you need comprehensive course opportunities for some children, every child's going to take third-grade reading at Jamesville. But when you get to high school, you might have some ninth graders that need English 1, some that need English 2, some that need, some that are already advanced beyond that. Some might want to move on to college courses, some may want an AP opportunity online. So the comprehensiveness of being able to provide a high-quality education at the high school level is just completely different than the elementary level. So we can adequately operate small elementary schools, whereas we cannot adequately operate small high schools because the needs are at opposite ends of the spectrum. It takes a lot more to provide equity in the high school environment than it does in the elementary school environment. As far as course options, career and technical education, leveled courses where you have honors, core, EC, the AP and advanced courses versus college classes, those type, those opportunities. Whereas at the elementary school, yes, you're going to have some differentiation, you're going to have advanced, you're going to have core, but everybody takes the same core classes. Did you have some?
Well, and the licensity of the high school is very specific, too, so that makes a difference.
That's a great point.
I was just going to say, for small schools, we can talk about small schools and how that's a disadvantage. It can be a disadvantage. When you get funding, though, we get funding ADM for the whole county. So it's kind of like Mr. Bullock talks about. They look at the county, and we have 300 kindergarten, we're funded. One, we get one teacher as a lot of per 18 kindergarten students. All right? So, but that's as a group. But when you start spreading that out, and you're at, let's say, Winston Primary, most of our classes there are at 20 kindergarten kids. When we get to our small schools, we, a lot of times, end up having to use more funding to put another teacher in place. Because we have just enough kids to be over our path, which means we have to create another class, and then we may end up with two classes that have 10 and 12 students in them. That's not equitable when you compare it to other kindergarten that have 20. So there's a disadvantage in funding a lot of times with small schools, just because sometimes we do have to put extra in in order to make those class size standards, not because the state didn't allow us for, for our students, this is how we have it as students spread out.
Okay, thank you.
And then you asked also about the out-of-school suspension rate for Riverside High School. The out-of-school suspension rate for South Creek was in SLED.
Oh, it was, I thought that was in-school, not out-of-school, okay.
The long-term suspension, short-term suspension, yes, it is on. Mr. Bullock, if you could go back to the beginning? And then, my computer died, so I'm going to have to take you there. Click. It's when we get to the, just keep clicking, one more? Go, go, right here? So you can see South Creek High School, there's short-term suspensions. So that is your three-day suspension, your five-day suspension, anything less than 10. You can see their rate was 645.74 per 1,000. It's incredibly high. The overall Martin County schools rate is 437, and you can see the state unemployment was 164. And then you see the long-term suspensions, that's anything beyond 10 days. And the in-school suspensions were particularly long at a rate when considering 1,000 students, it was beyond 1,000.
And this compares to Riverside how?
So, so the state doesn't compare schools?
Oh, no, I mean, what is the rate for Riverside?
I, I don't know that number off the top of my head. This was a comprehensive study of South Creek, not comparing the two schools, but just looking at the state of South Creek. But I would be glad to provide the Board with that information as well.
But if you look at Martin County schools, it's less than what South Creek schools is, and that would be an average, so that would tell you that Riverside is a lot less than what South Creek was.
But it says Martin County schools, so that, that means, it's only high schools? It's not, I would think Martin County schools, don't, don't middle school students get suspension?
Yes, it does, that is so.
I mean, so, how can we say that?
And, and look, what we have to understand, and, and we will definitely get that, I've got Sarah pulling up the North Carolina School report card right now, I apologize, my computer died. But what, what I want to, this is analysis of where South Creek was. One of the big differences that we see, and, and we can get into talking about what the comparison would be, but it's important to note that this is where South Creek was. And what we're seeing at Riverside is a trend in the right direction with, where what we're seeing at South Creek was going in, in opposite direction. And also, as I've been very transparent with this Board, I've, I was not happy or felt that discipline's where it needs to be district-wide. We've had to make a lot of changes and a lot of strides to get things going in the right direction. And we have, I'm not telling you it's perfect, but it's night and day better today than it was a year ago at this time. And I definitely can tell you that at Riverside High School and the team, feel free to chime in, it's just a night and day's different experience. So, which one do we use, this one? So at Riverside High School, the short-term's per 1,000. Now, keep in mind, this is per 1,000. They have 450 students compared to South Creek's 247-ish students. Those are numbers from this year, not exact for last year. But short-terms were 743, 53. Long-terms were at zero. Expulsions were at zero. And in-school suspensions were 604.
Thank you.
And that's with an enrollment more than double South Creek. Ms. Purvis, did I address each question that you asked? Did I miss anything?
Yes, ma'am, between you and Ms. Cynthia.
Okay.
I did want to say to you, Purvis, that that 605 actually is where we're picking up students right there at Rogers, I mean, right in the back, right there. So those kids are now straight to Riverside, but they're five, 10 minutes down.
So it wouldn't even, it'd be shorter than, okay, thank you. Okay.
And in case people listening could not hear that, she was saying the student that had to be picked up for South Creek was actually in, closer to the Williamson area. They actually live closer to Rogers, which means that their actual commute time will be decreased through the consolidation if that's the direction the Board decides to go. May, may I entertain any other questions? Does anyone else have something that you wanted to ask that has not been addressed? Okay. At this time, I would like to ask the Board for a vote to continue the merger next school year. While I understand that when we made the vote the first time, it was indefinite until we could secure enough positions, or until the Board felt that we could provide an equitable education. However, I think it's important to, to revisit it. We wanted to provide you with a comprehensive study. And so at this time, this is not a vote to close South Creek High School. This is a vote to continue the merge next semester based on the information that we've presented. The reason we need to make a decision regarding next semester is for scheduling purposes. You've heard Ms. Whitaker outline tonight the work that they've been doing. And so we know what every child wants and what they need, and now we actually have to hand, just like we've met with them one-on-one, we have to hand-schedule our students for the classes that they need, and that takes time. And so we need to begin that work if it is the pleasure of the Board. So I'm asking for a vote to continue the merger for the fall semester.
All right, is there a motion?
I move to continue the merger for the next semester.
Yes, ma'am.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to continue the merger. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay?
Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Next, I would like for the Board to consider beginning community meetings to, community meetings are outlined in the general statute that we shared tonight as a part of closing the school. We have conducted our case study, but as part of that study, we would also like to include the input of our community. So tonight, I'm asking the Board for a vote to hold community meetings regarding the consolidation of South Creek High School.
Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion that we start having community meetings on consolidation.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to start community meetings on the consolidation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you.
Thank you.
And Michelle, don't be saying closing the school, that, that freaks everybody out.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Purvis.
Say consolidation.
All right, take it away.
Mr. Chair, I move the Martin County Board of Education into closed session subject to advice from the Attorney pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1 and A6 to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel information under General Statute 115(c)(319), and to consider matters relating to initial employment of an individual employee. The Board would also go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3 to consult with the Board's Attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege to consider confidential student matters as provided in North Carolina General Statute 143.318.11A1 and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act 20USC 1232G and the North Carolina General Statute 115(c)(402). The Board would also go into closed session to establish or instruct staff or agents concerning the terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property as provided in North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A5.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second, enter closed session. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay? Thank you, closed session's granted. And to you team members that presented tonight, if any of you can still hear me, thank you. Thank you very much.
Wonderful presentations. Wonderful presentations.
Great.
Friday, I need a motion to approve personnel as presented in closed session. Have a motion and a second to approve personnel as presented in closed session. All in favor say aye. Oppose nay. Thank you. Announcements.
Here we are. May 6, 2024 will be our Board of Education joint meeting with our county commissioners, and that will be our work session. We are flipping the work session and meeting for the month of May. So please note that May 6 will be our joint work session meeting with the county commissioners, where we will present our budget. On May 20th, we will have our regularly scheduled board meeting on that night. And I do want to share, board members, that we did receive a thank you card that I will share with each of you from our Odyssey of the Mine team, saying thank you for supporting them in their trip as they go to the world championship in Iowa later in the month of May. So I did want to share a special thank you for them, and also to our community businesses that are sponsoring and supporting them. Our students are working through sponsorship letters with several businesses who have been very generous in ensuring that our children get this opportunity to represent Martin County schools on the world stage. So thank you to our local citizens and businesses that are all coming together to help get our children to this opportunity at Iowa. That concludes our announcements.
Alrighty. Does anybody have anything they'd like to bring up? Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye. Oppose nay. Adjourn.